Good evening and welcome to the evening meeting of the Township of Langley's Council Regular Evening Meeting. Could I please have a motion to adopt and receive agenda items? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Moved? Any opposed? Thank you. Could I have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes of the meeting from March 27th? Councillor Fox, Councillor Arnesson, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation for the Kodiak Senior Girl Basketball Team. And I assume all those tall girls over there are our team. So it's my pleasure to welcome you here tonight to the council chambers to congratulate you on your victory at, in Duncan. Winning the B.C. High School Senior Girls One A Basketball Provincial Tournament. Congratulations, girls. Well done. Who did you defeat to win the title?
Mulgrave.
I'm sorry?
Mulgrave.
Mulgrave, okay. Nice. And what was the final score?
We won by six. So seventy-two, sixty-six.
Well done, girls. Congratulations. So we have some certificates we'd like to present to you.
So if you would mind coming forward when we call your name, and then you'll get a picture taken as a presenting of your certificate. So player number four, jersey number four, Sarah Shatton.
She's not here.
Okay, so we'll send that back to you.
Yep.
Jersey number five, Kristen Cookström.
Congratulations.
And then we'll get a picture.
Jersey number six, Rebecca Alshman. Number eleven, Caitlin Seacline. Number twelve, Maria Dicks-Rob. Good job. Number thirteen, Rena Towns. She can leave here. Number fourteen, Esther Allison. Well done. Number fifteen, Samantha Leyenworth. Number twenty, Larissa Mollman. Number twenty-one, Brooklyn Chrome. Did I put your name right? Congratulations. Number twenty-three, Alicia Stan. Well done, Alicia. Congratulations. And number thirty-three, Carrie Stan. Congratulations. And I'm thinking Coach Karen Anderson might have had something to do with that. Well done, Coach. Congratulations. Where do you represent, girls?
Denise was just a little bit.
Yeah, we can get just to center her a little bit.
Do you want the others in the?
It's up to them.
No, it's the girls' thing.
Maybe I'll get a few of you to come on to the other side of Councillor Qualley. Steven, y'all.
Wow, you guys are small.
Very big smile. Super. Thank you. Thanks, girl.
If you want to make your way out, we won't be offended, but if you'd like to stay and watch your municipal government at work, you're certainly welcome. As I suspected. So we have two delegations this evening that I understand are going to combine their time for a total of ten minutes, so five minutes per delegation. So there's two delegations from Brookswood-Furnridge Community Association. So are you doing the full ten minutes, or?
First three, I'm sure that's one of them.
Okay, so I just need you to give your name and the city that you live in, and then we'll start the clock. So you'll have five minutes, and then I'll start the clock again for the next five.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Ready?
Okay, so my name is Amy Rose. I live in Langley. I'm here representing the Brookswood-Furnridge Community Association. Our group tonight includes Terry McNeese.
Now we're good? Okay. Better? Okay. Okay. So like I said, my name is Amy Rose. I'm here representing Brookswood-Furnridge Community Association. Our group includes Terry McNeese, who's a Surrey resident and is very knowledgeable about development in Surrey. He works to ensure that development remains sensitive to the area. We also have Frank Mugenberg, who is a Surrey resident with Farmland in the one eighty-six-hundred block of Twenty-Fourth Avenue. We're here today to inform Langley Township Council and staff about what's happening in the Campbell Heights Business Park and to ask for the Township of Langley's help. Time is of the essence. A thirty-day window for comments on the Weir Chemicals Canada proposal started on April 4th. Next week, EPCO Metal Finishing is having an open house on Tuesday, April 18th, and that will mark the beginning of their thirty-day comment period. Once these comment periods are over, Metro Vancouver can make a decision on what happens with these air emission applications. As such, we need the Township of Langley to act quickly. As a resident of Brookswood, I am very concerned with the health effects these two plants are going to have on my neighbors, my family, everyone in Brookswood-Furnridge, and elsewhere in Langley. These two plants are within blocks of residence homes, senior centers, mobile home parks, schools, and daycare centers in Langley. There is not an invisible wall around these plants to keep the emissions on their property. There is not an invisible wall on 196th Street buffering Langley from Surrey. These emissions will follow wind patterns over Langley and affect us all. The township is looking to add twenty-six thousand people into Brookswood-Furnridge, but who's going to want to move into homes that are within a few blocks of these two plants emitting carcinogenic compounds into our air, water, and soil? We're asking the township to go to Metro Vancouver and request a community informational meeting for Langley, which would include Township Council, township staff, representatives from Fraser Health, and residents regarding the permits Weir and EPCO are seeking for air emissions. We want the township to ask Metro Vancouver for better explanations on the effects of the various compounds that will be released should these permits be granted. We need to know not only what the effects are on the air, but also the soil and the water. These emissions will affect the Brookswood aquifer and our drinking water. They will affect the soil and water used for the crops on the farms surrounding the plants. They will affect our health, our kids' health, and our seniors' health. We need the Township of Langley to demand that Metro Vancouver look at what the cumulative effect of the proposed emissions from Weir Minerals Canada and EPCO Metal Finishing are. They also need to be coupled with the effects from emissions from other potential emitters in the Campbell Heights Business Park. The increased emissions resulting from higher density proposed for Brookswood-Furnridge needs to be taken into account as well. We're asking for the effect not only on air quality, but also on the quality of soil and water. We need township staff to tell Metro Vancouver what the sensitive receptors in Langley are, and we need to know the hazards these receptors face. We'd like for the township to demand that Metro Vancouver step up and declare that the Campbell Heights Business Park be a zero-emissions zone. This industrial park is way too close to Farmland and residential areas for anything else to be acceptable. Thank you.
My name's Terry McNeese. Is this one on? Good evening. My name's Terry McNeese. I live in Surrey. My presentation's going to be brief. I just want to give you a history on the galvanizing plant and the Weir Canada plant. What you see here is the EPCO galvanizing plant, which is in Richmond. Shown on this picture is not only their galvanizing plant, but a chrome plating plant. We're concerned, the galvanizing plant is already located in the Campbell Heights area. We're also concerned that they're going to move the chrome plating plant to the same This is also a location of another galvanizing plant, which is in Anisus Island, and you can see both these plants are in heavy industrial areas. Unfortunately, this is the location of the galvanizing plant in South Surrey. This picture was taken before all of those trees were removed. There is about twelve hundred trees removed from this area. Now, we've done a lot of research work on the galvanizing plant. We filed numerous FOIs with both the city of Surrey and also Metro Vancouver, and this is one of the hazardous chemicals that we've been able to identify that's been used in As Amy mentioned, here is the meeting, the scheduled meeting for the EPCO galvanizing plant, and we would request or suggest that everybody takes an opportunity to attend this meeting, and you can voice your concerns. And as Amy mentioned also, this is the Weir Canada plant. This is a relatively new plant. It's also in the Campbell Heights area. Our concern is both of these plants are going to have emissions. Unfortunately, the emissions are not measured, and that's one of the things that we're requesting. So our concern is Surrey is allowing these industrial plants in basically what we call our farming community. There's conventional and organic farmers. Many farms are on well water. These plants are close to the East Kensington Elementary School. Unfortunately, we haven't had a lot of support from the mayor and council members. They stated that we need to take our concerns to the city of Vancouver whenever we approach, sorry, with Metro Vancouver. When we approach Metro Vancouver with regards to the air quality permits, they send us back to Surrey. They said that it's up to Surrey to either allow or disallow the construction of these plants. Through an FOI request with Metro Vancouver, they have never canceled, denied, or revoked an air quality permit. We've had numerous meetings with Metro Vancouver with regards to this issue, and unfortunately, we've never had any success with them. We've spent endless hours and expenses taking EPCO to the Environmental Appeal Board. When EPCO first announced their plant, they only had what's called an approval, which is a short-term approval method. That approval expired the end of last November, and they've since applied for a permit, and we're going to challenge the permit for both EPCO and also for Weir. The other thing we're concerned about is the destruction of the trees in the area where these plants are being constructed. Thank you for your time.
Two minutes is going to be a trick. Frank Mugenberg from South Surrey, thank you for receiving a neighbor. One would think that Metro Vancouver would be the most common place to go for the complaints, and that would appear to be logical. However, in reality, that's not the case. I believe with the short time constraints that we have, that the Township of Langley could be more effective in making direct contact to the city of Surrey as there is a bylaw change in place. For you to deal with Metro is going to take months, if not years. I've been at this for over nearly two years and forty-odd grand, and I'm still fighting. So I think to support the recent motion for the rezoning of that particular industrial piece of land that excludes all emissions would be the strongest support that the township could do in the short term. Still green. Can I go? Just under a minute. There we go. The, lost my train of thought. Trying to get the effectiveness of the city councils to city council, they're both in some ways bureaucratic nightmares, and I don't mean any disrespect by that, but there are procedures to be followed. And because Metro is an overwatching governing body, that would be realistic for the township or the city to go to Metro, but in actual fact, Metro do nothing but clean up messes. And they work for their board, of which the city of Surrey has six board members. So you can see how ineffective anything from Metro can be and how clumsy and cumbersome. The motion that's before the city council of Surrey, which I think is probably our best shot, and it would be more equal for your particular organization to go directly, and it would counter the myopic aspects that we've had in town planning in the city of Surrey. That really puts the end of that.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your delegation tonight. I do have a question from Councillor Arnesson. Maybe you could let us know who, to whom you're directing your question?
Maybe to Terry?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, thank you all very much for coming tonight. So I did have a couple of questions. So the first one is, I'm just wondering if your group was aware of the dispersal model yet? Whether or not you'd actually seen that? Because that's, my understanding is necessary in order for the approval to be finally given.
No, actually, I'm glad you raised that point, because unfortunately, we have to file FOIs for both EPCO and Weir, and generally, they say they take thirty days, and usually they take a lot longer. So in the past, with regards to EPCO, we've filed numerous FOIs, not only for the modeling you're talking about, but also the application for the air quality permit. So, and that applies in both cases.
Okay, because that brings me to a point. I have checked twice now with staff in the township and maybe through Madam Chair or two staff. I just want to check and make sure that we haven't received that yet ourselves through staff. Last I heard, we hadn't received it either.
That's correct. We've not received it.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, just a point, and have you, if you don't mind me asking, have you filed an FOI?
Personally, no.
No, I mean, sorry, staff.
All the staff. I'm not aware that we have done that.
That's our experience here. You have to file a Freedom of Information FOI. Right. And so if you do file it, you want to ask for, also for the application for the air quality permit.
Okay. Well, that brings me, I guess, to my next question, just in terms of transparency. So generally understood that there's not a lot of information, other than what's been printed in the notice to the public, so.
Very, very little information. Yes.
Okay. Well, I just want to make another point further to your request for a public meeting is because unfortunately, the date that was chosen, April 4th, was a date that a lot of township councillors would have otherwise gone to a township activity, which was unfortunate. And so I really think that from that perspective, to have staff there, as well as some councillors, would be very helpful. And just finally, the one thing that did occur to me, and I wasn't aware of this until recently myself, that actually, the township and a couple of other neighboring communities had signed something called the Liveability Accord. And the city of Surrey is actually part, they're the signatories to that, as well as ourselves. And it talks about cooperating towards the protection of the environment and social health. So it's really about a sustainable plan and working together. So, yeah, I just hope that we can take the direction from there and move towards working more cooperatively.
That would be a good idea. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Was there any other questions, or?
I'm Councillor Richter next.
Yes, thank you. I guess Terry McNeese, this is for you as well, because it's part of your, one of your paragraphs here, it says, "This new plant has been shut down for approximately one-and-a-half years as the Environmental Appeal Board has issued a stay, and the temporary approval has expired."
Yes.
Do we know why there's been a stay issued on that plant?
That's due to our efforts. Well, once, once we became aware, I don't want to take up a lot of your time, but this was originally presented to the community as warehousing. And through the planning and development reports, Surrey did not have to issue any pre-notification letters. We weren't aware of the plant, and so, and still the construction started, and we became back to FOI. So there is a group, which I call a group of fourteen, and in that group is Loblaw's, Anne Frank, myself, and farmers. We took action against that plant all the way to Victoria, and we were successful in getting it shut down. So I believe in only operating it for about eighty days, and it's been done ever since.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, our goal is to shut it down permanently.
To shut it down permanently.
Yes, it doesn't belong there. There's no way in this world that plant should be there. There's room on the same site for a chrome plating plant. I have all the chemicals, and they are far worse.
Right. So the public was told at that point, when it was built, that it was going to be a warehouse?
Yes, that's well documented.
Has the same thing happened with the Weir plant? Where the public told it was going to be a warehouse, too?
We study all of the planning and development reports. The Weir plant, when the report came out, exact wording says, "Three steam-heated autoclaves" in one sentence. No, the origin came out, when they made the application for the permit, forty-two tons of emissions.
Okay.
No comment whatsoever in the planning and development. And the public was never aware of it until the eleventh hour, they applied for permits, and then we became aware of it, and then we took action then.
So are you trying to get an Environmental Appeal Board stay on Weir as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, the.
With your cooperation.
The Richmond and North Delta plants.
Yes.
Were there any, or is there any data on air contamination fallout around those plants?
Yes, the air quality reports are available, but if you noticed in my presentation, both of them are in very heavy industrial areas, and you can see what's happening to us. These plants are being relocated from Richmond, both Weir and EPCO, and they're ending up in our farming community.
Okay. So if there's been any kind of contamination then in Richmond or North Delta, it would be hard to trace it to that point?
We wouldn't know. It'd be difficult to trace.
You wouldn't know. Okay. Now, Councillor Arnesson mentioned the dispersal report. There hasn't been any dispersal report done. I know our staff have said that they were unable to support the proposal because there's no proposed discharge on ambient air quality. But do we have, or do you have any idea what exactly these contaminants do and what the radius of the potential fallout for them would be?
Some of that information is now documented. They have, they issued an EPN, Environment Protection Notice, and that lists all of the chemicals, the discharges, and I believe Amy has that information available, but that has been published for both plants. Both plants have reduced their emissions once the public became aware of what was taking place.
Okay. But the reduction in the emissions, are they down below acceptable air quality standards?
I would say maybe to Metro's standards, they may be, but certainly not to ours.
Okay. So we don't have any studies on the long-term health impacts?
No, none whatsoever.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. One more question from Councillor Arnesson.
Sorry, just a quick one. Because there was a reference to a zero emission, and so I'm wondering, because I think it was Frank that brought that up.
Yes.
Is there an opportunity just to briefly discuss what opportunities there might be for that?
Well, zero emissions started in Austria in the year 2004. Zero emissions at that time, that's well documented, but it was zero emissions from, emissions from a complete plant, just not air emissions, but all emissions from a plant. And we've been stressing zero emissions from day one. Both of these companies have informed us, informed the community, that they're state-of-the-art. And matter of fact, EPCO have publicly announced zero emissions. That's been stated a number of times in the press. So basically, we're holding them accountable for it. If you state, if you have state-of-the-art plants, which both of them do, and you've already stated zero emissions, then we're holding you accountable for it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, the next part of our agenda tonight, bylaws for first and second reading, rezoning application 100466, bylaw 5264. Can I have a motion? Councillor Sparrow? Thank you, Councillor Whitmarsh. Any discussion? Councillor Arnesson?
Yes.
Nope. Now you are.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question regarding some of the comments that came from the public, and maybe through you, Chair or two staff. I'm wondering about the lane, because it seemed to be a common concern for those attending, and what is the rationale for including the lane in that configuration?
Mr. Richardson?
Through your worship to Councillor Arnesson, the neighborhood plan has a policy statement about street-facing lots, so having the front doors of housing facing the collector road in this instance, so that's why the configuration is shown, and having the access from the rear of the property minimizing accesses directly from the front yard.
Okay, because the other comment was, why couldn't they all be facing along the same street?
Once again, it's a policy item within the design guidelines of the plan indicating that front doors should be facing streets. And if the houses were oriented north-south versus east-west, you would have the houses, you'd have a flanking street and a flanking side yard versus a front yard facing the street.
Okay, so it's contrary to our planning policy. And just a secondary question, there is a map on there that shows the different areas, and there seemed to be, to me, an intersection between an area of significant trees and the back of this development. And so I'm wondering, is there, if somebody could maybe explain that intersection to I don't know. No? Next one? No? Is that all you have? That's not helping. It's in our staff report. Let me just see.
What page?
Okay, I gotta look now. Let's see. Oh, okay. On the digital copy, it's page four of sixteen.
It's the map that's on the screen?
Oh, there. Oh, I apologize. Okay, so it's the, it's the area there where you can see that there's significant trees, and then there's the subject property, so.
Through your worship to Councillor Arnesson, the subject property does not contain the designation referred to. That designation is on a subject property to the south. The property under application currently is the one indicated by my cursor here. The significant tree designation starts further south.
Okay, I understand that. It's just my understanding that from time to time, if you are going to take out all the significant trees on the subject property, then there's going to be an area that's rather vulnerable with the next-door stand of trees. That's what I'm asking.
Through your worship to Councillor Arnesson, the proponents, arborists, along with the staff arborist, have the opportunity to review through the integrated site design concept, the lot layout, appropriate trees retained or appropriate trees removed, given the density provided, and that's also subject to finalization prior to final reading. However, today it's been deemed acceptable, and the trees, once again, as indicated on the plan, are south of the subject property.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I had a question with regards to, the application itself says that it is, sorry, I'm just looking here, five single-family lots that's being built, but on the school report, it refers to, and the school report is on page fifty-nine, Attachment A, that there are six units going in there. So I just wanted clarification. Which is correct? Is it five or six?
Through your worship to Councillor Richter, the appropriate number is five. There appears to be an error on the referral back from the school district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'll call the question on the motion. And that passes with Councillor Richter, Councillor Fox, Councillor Whitmarsh, Councillor Qualley, Councillor Sparrow, Councillor Davis, Councillor Long in favor. Thank you. Next is F2, rezoning application 100456, bylaw 5269. Can I have a motion? Councillor Fox? Second, please. Councillor Long? Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I had a question with regards to the tree protection and replacement. Yeah, I had a question with regards to the tree protection and replacement. It says on page nine of the report that there are one hundred and eighteen significant trees on the subject site with only two proposed for retention, and that only sixty-nine replacement trees are required. I was under the impression that, don't we look for one-for-one replacement trees? I was just wondering to have, wanting to have some clarification on that from staff.
Through your worship to councillor Richter, the subdivision development servicing bylaw, schedule I, tree replacement requires thirty trees per acre, irregardless of the number of trees that are currently there, in terms of replacement.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Arneson?
Yes, through you, Chair, to staff, please. Can somebody please explain to me this panhandle aspect of the roadway 78? Is that some future consideration for an access point?
Through your worship to councillor Arneson, as indicated on the overhead, there's a right-of-way currently on this subject property. The idea in the future, you'll see the configuration here, there's two cul-de-sacs, there's a current temporary access to seventy-two Avenue. Ultimately, the road path in this neighbourhood will have a fully signalized intersection at seventy-two and two oh six street. This will then become a cul-de-sac at this location, and the access will be through this methodology here, and this road alignment is indicated here.
Okay, so that won't go through?
Here it will not.
It's a double cul-de-sac?
Folks accessing this in the future will access it via two oh six street, I believe it's seventy-eight Avenue, and then this way.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I just want to go back to the trees again. It's thirty trees per acre is the replacement policy?
Through your worship to councillor Richter, that's the bylaw.
Okay, so we've got four acres here of land, and thirty times four is a hundred and twenty trees, if my math is correct. So if it's a hundred and twenty trees, why are we only saying that there were, or accepting sixty-nine replacement trees?
Through your worship to councillor Richter, on occasion, given the particulars of a site layout, such as the layout here, we have residential compact lots and relatively smaller R1B lots, staff along with the qualified professionals from the consultant side look to see how many trees can realistically be planted on the site. As you point out, if those full a hundred and twenty trees cannot be allocated or provided for on the site, the bylaw allows them to be provided as a cash-and-lou option to be provided and planted elsewhere, such as parks and other greenways.
So is that what's intended here, that there will be a cash placement where payment for the missing trees? Because it's not totally clear in the report.
Through your worship to councillor Richter, that's correct, subject to the final plan being adopted prior to council's consideration of final reading.
Okay, and was any consideration ever given to perhaps not having one or two of those lots that are proposed in order to retain trees that are already on those lots?
Through your worship to councillor Richter, yes. It depends on the, one, what the neighbourhood plan talks about in terms of density, so there's a balance in terms of achieving the density that's outlined in the northeast corner state plan, as well as the road layout, and then what that sort of lot pattern yields, and then how the trees sort of integrate into that. We start with staff and the consulting side early in the development application process to achieve just that, but it's a number of factors that contribute to the layout that you see there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I'll call the question on F2. And the motion passes with councillor Fox, councillor Whitmarsh, Qualley, councillor Froze, councillor Davis, and councillor Long in favor. Or, sorry, Mayor Froze is away. Moving along to, sorry, I have a lot of paper here. Bylaws for first, second, and third reading, G1, the annual rates and tax collection bylaw for universal services. Could I have a, thanks councillor Sparrow, second. Councillor Fox, thank you. Any discussion? I'll call the question then. Oh, okay. Councillor Richter?
Yes, on the replacement pages that came out to us today, it says that township received a revised 2017 annual tax requisition from Metro Vancouver on Friday, September the seventh, and our requisition went up from one point eight one five to one point eight eight five million dollars. So I'm wondering, number one, can Metro do this at the last minute? Number two, why did the requisition amount go up? Like, did they make a mistake initially when they sent us the estimates? And number three, what is going to be the impact on the average home of this revision?
Ms Sinclair?
Yes, through the Chair to councillor Richter. This does quite often happen with Metro Vancouver. We're working with draft rates at the time we're passing our rates, their board doesn't meet until typically around the eleventh of April. So I actually call them usually in that last week when we're pulling our rates together, and they gave me the indication that we wouldn't be getting their rates in time, so we go forward with the draft. And then this does happen quite often, that we'll get the revised at the last minute, and we substitute them in. As to whether they can do it, I would have to check the legal, but I'm assuming that they can. And as far as the impact on the average home, I'd have to calculate that. I wouldn't have that handy right now.
Okay, and what, why are they raising their rates? Like, what's driving the increase for them?
I'd have to get in touch with them. I receive these late on Friday, so I'd have to get that information and come back to you with that.
Okay, so does that mean, through the Chair to Mr Backing, should we defer this for that additional information?
If council feels it's necessary, perhaps we could review the, we certainly could, we could perhaps review some of the questions that were raised. Generally, when you're dealing with Metro Vancouver, they're predicting their rates based on certain cost drivers that they know to be in existence. Quite often through the process, they revise and revisit those cost drivers, such as labor or some of the inputs which might be electrical costs that go along with it. So they are able to actually publish their rates as they see fit, because effectively they're a service provider to the municipalities. In this circumstance, what I understood it to be, from the brief look we had, it seems to be that they've got a better handle on their cost drivers, and they've simply passed those along. Our deferral could be to better explain those, however, the result will still be they're going to charge these rates, or we won't be able to be, I guess, receiving their services. So it's a bit of a catch-22 in terms of if we seek to delay, we can, but it won't affect the ultimate result.
Okay, is there a deadline that we need to have this bylaw pass by?
We're hopeful that it can be first three reads tonight and fourth and final at the next council meeting, just because we try to get our notices out at a reasonable time in May to give taxpayers a long enough time to organize their affairs. So this would definitely, it would push us into the first, the first meeting in May.
But, sort of to clarify, the effect is not on Metro, the effect is on our residents, because what it can mean is that our rates are published later, which means that it's a bit of a catch-up for them. It also means that we may have to pass amendments as we go forward. Our timeframe is different than that of Metro Vancouver's timeframe, where legislator will be required to do things by what day in May?
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth. So the delay is challenging for us, because it simply means that we're then left with less time to try to get the notifications out to the residents.
Okay, and is there an appeal mechanism that we have with Metro Vancouver on these rates?
Not in a direct sense. We can request the board review the rates with a view, not so much of asserting their validity, but to reduce their costs overall. That would be our approach, to try to suggest that they have lower rates. Representatives of the Metro Board themselves could comment on that in terms of whether that's, whether it has a likelihood of success. Traditionally, not. They're effectively a service provider. They take their inputs, they pass them along. Their process starts later than our process, so the result is often that we're playing catch-up. The impact of the rates is intended, I think, entirely to be simply they pass the costs along. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, I'll call the question on G1. And the motion passes with councillor Fox, councillor Arneson, councillor Whitmarsh, councillor Qualley, councillor Sparrow, councillor Davis, and councillor Long in favor. And can I have a question on this? Sure.
Seeing as how we're just giving this for second and third, we still have to give it final, is there any way that staff can get that additional info from Metro for us by the time we have to give it final?
Can you take that as direction? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number G2, Parkland disposal and dedication removal Bray Island, bylaw number 5263. Could I have a mover? Councillor Fox? Councillor Whitmarsh? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on G2. And that motion passes unanimously. And moving on to I, I1 zoning bylaw amendment, the child-friendly amenity area regulations, bylaw number 5248. Councillor Sparrow and councillor Arneson, any discussion? I'll call, oh, councillor Long?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Just wanted to, maybe staff can help us through, Madam Chair, just to verify that the parks, the surfaces of these, of these playgrounds and pocket parks, and actually, we're calling them age-friendly, areas for all ages, would have different, different surfaces that wouldn't necessarily be, and these pictures are quite handy, but you notice that many of them are that black tire, rubber compound, although these look a little bit blue, that's nice. But having, doing some checking around of other areas throughout North America, other colors are being used so that it doesn't attract so much heat in the sun, and it also looks so much better. In fact, what I saw the other day was like an artificial turf, so it actually looked like grass. And I was just hoping that, and we've talked about this a number of times over the years, that that would be embedded somehow in the policy, that the practice of using better surfaces, and more friendly services to everybody would be used. So I guess that the slide is up for that reason, but maybe staff can verify that, just as we give it the last reading here.
That's correct. The policy provides for the flexibility to use the appropriate surface, given the environmental conditions and surrounding circumstances. So with that, then, it's been, I guess, evolved to a position where it's not restrictive as it once was, say, perhaps in the area of child-friendly amenities. It's more variable now because of the input that we received.
And because more materials are available now that are still safe and suitable, so we'll look forward to that. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
I think our staff does a really great job of staying up to date on the current materials and products available to them, so they are anxious to utilize new technology when it's available to them. So I'll call the question on I1. And the motion passes unanimously. I, or sorry, J1, bylaw for final adoption, local area service tax bylaw 2017, bylaw number 5270 and bylaw 5271. Could I have a motion? Councillor Davis? Councillor Fox? Any discussion? I'll call the question on J1. And that motion passes unanimously. J2, Langley fees and charges by law amendment, bylaw 5273. Councillor Davis? Councillor Fox? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on J2. And that motion passes unanimously. J3, Fort Langley BIA enactment, bylaw number 5272. Could I have a mover? Councillor Sparrow, second. Councillor Long? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on J3. And that motion passes unanimously. Okay, and now for the mayor's report, most exciting part of the evening. I had to throw that in there. He would probably not be happy if I left that out. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm pleased to provide the weekly report on events in the township on behalf of Mayor Froze, who's enjoying a bit of time away with his family. Wednesday, March 29th, the Action for Housing Now Dialogue Session was hosted by the Taiyi Solutions Society. The strategic initiative is to ensure safe, sustainable, adequate housing, which is necessary for individual and community well-being. On Friday, March 31st, I was happy to attend the annual Big Brothers, Big Sisters Bowl for Kids' Sake. Councillor Fox was there, but he left just before we took the photo. I was pleased to attend and be part of the team with councillor Fox, councillor Whitmarsh, Mayor Froze, and Mr Story. We had a great evening, and we're happy to be part of the funds raised for the Big Brothers, Big Sisters totaling about thirty thousand dollars. On Saturday, April 1st, was the Celebration of Life for retired township firefighter Len Foss. Len began his career with the Township Fire Department in 1977, was later promoted to district fire chief, and retired in December 2007. Len contributed greatly to our community through his work and also as a rotarian for many years. Our sympathies go out to Len's family, friends, and longtime comrades within the fire department. On Monday, April 3rd, township council members had a joint dinner meeting with the city of Pitt Meadows. One of the topics discussed included the civic engagement process, which they were really interested in learning about how we were successful in implementing our new engagement strategy, and the farm-home plate, so how to get more food purchased locally in the municipality. On Tuesday, April 4th, was the opening of the Martini Film Studio. The massive studio has eight stages over a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, and another hundred thousand feet of full backlot services that enables it to house three full productions at once. This is an exciting new venture and will bring additional economic benefits to the township of Langley. I'd also like to mention and congratulate Luke Coughlin, who received the township of Langley, is endowed award, or is that an endowment award? Endowed award? Is that right?
I believe it's endowment.
And I thought so too. Thank you. Endowment award at the April 4th KPU School of Horticulture Awards Event. Luke is studying horticulture technology and is working temporarily for the township in our parks department. On Tuesday, April 4th, was the annual volunteer appreciation event for the township of Langley, close to three hundred guests in attendance, all of whom who volunteered to make this community a better place each and every day. Congratulations again to the John and Muriel Arneson recipients, Brenda and Wayne Singbeal, our Flower Due recipient, Alice Johnson, and Virginia Nickel, our 2017 Pete Swenson recipient. On Friday, April 7th, I was pleased to attend the annual Spartans Athletic Awards Evening at the Langley Events Center. I assisted in presenting some of the awards to these amazing top athletes, including Luca Schmidt of Langley for women's basketball, and Langley's Ally Williamson for women's soccer. Councillor Whitmarsh was also in attendance to present awards to the male and female graduating varsity athletes who best exemplify scholastic and athletic achievements. And I was feeling really short earlier, but not quite as short as I was feeling at this event. Councillor Whitmarsh and I were definitely the little people in the room. On Saturday, April 8th, was the softball 2007, Langley Softball 2017 season opener at Knoll Booth Park in Brookswood. This is an amazing park. I was impressed by how well-maintained our playing fields are, and would like to recognize our recreation culture and park staff for their commitment to maintaining the high quality of our township parks. Considering the amount of rain we've had in the last few months, the park was in excellent condition. On Sunday, April 9th, it was the one-hundredth anniversary of Vimy Ridge. I want to congratulate the Canadian Museum of Flight and all the volunteers whose efforts and hard work ensured that the Sopwith pup replicas were built and sent over to France in time for the one-hundredth anniversary yesterday. We have a video of the fly past from Eris, France, and the Vimy ceremony yesterday, and councillor, or sorry, mayor Froze, along with a few other township residents were in attendance. So this is, these are the two Sopwith pups from our airport here that were sent to France, and this is the flyover. Kind of looks like Langley. Pretty amazing. Hundred years ago, those planes were state-of-the-art. Pretty amazing. Coming up in the next couple of weeks, on Wednesday evening, I'm looking forward to attending the B.C. Sports Hall of Fame Banquet of Champions, where we will honor George and Diane Tidball and induct them into the Hall of Fame. Easter is coming up, of course, this weekend. The First World War Memorial Tree Dedication is taking place on Sunday, April twenty-third, on Ninety-Sixth and Glover in Fort Langley. And that's also Arbor Day, Sunday, April twenty-third. And we'll be having our Arbor Day celebrations at Hudson Bay Park at the fort in Fort Langley. So I hope you can join us there. Counselor Fox, do you have anything from Metro? Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Fox?
Well, you've probably heard about it, read about it, and figured it out, that the topic of the day is the twenty seventeen homeless count in Metro Vancouver. And our Langley homeless count, certainly the due diligence identified a fairly significant increase in the homeless population in the Langleys. They did not separate city and township, so it's all one. Anyway, you can read about it. I have a meeting later this week with our homeless committee, Metro Vancouver Homeless Committee, but I've got copies here. If anybody wants an actual, real copy of the report, they're right here, and you can pick one up, and then it does, has all the comparators, and so on and so forth, so.
Can you distribute that electronically, Counsel Fox? Do you have it?
I probably can.
Okay, that would be better, thank you, than a printed copy.
Okay, what am we going to do with these, then?
I'll take one if it'll make you feel better.
I'm not taking them home.
Some people might want these from here.
Yes, some people, I'm sure, would enjoy a hard copy.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, Counsel Fox. Counsel Long, do you have anything from Metro?
Oh, don't forget, it's the fiftieth anniversary of parks, so.
Visit a park this Easter, and every, and every week.
Okay, so that is it for Metro. Any other new business? Counsel Richter?
Yes, I would like to refer the requests of the delegation this evening, the two delegations to staff, for their assistance with the items, or for a report back to council on assistance with the items requested. I think they're all listed on this first page here.
The first page of the handout?
Yeah. We're asking council to request a community informational meeting, get better explanations, have staff talk to Metro Vancouver. So just to refer the delegation's request to staff.
Do we need a motion? Yes, so.
I'm moving that.
So is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Whitmarsh?
I would think time is somewhat of the essence on this one because of the thirty-day window for comments. That will end on May fourth for Weir and May eighteenth for EBCO.
So Ms. Bauer, do I label this as N-one? Yes. So I'll call the question on Counsel Richter's motion. And the motion passes unanimously. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have another, I have a motion further to the delegation tonight, so I'll just read it out. Whereas a safe water supply is fundamental to the health of the community and source protection, must be a critical part of the drinking water protection plan. And whereas watershed and aquifer protection are vital to protect the integrity of drinking water, and whereas thousands of users, including municipal, private, and agricultural users, reside in Brookswood Furnridge and rely on the Brookswood Aquifer for potable water, and whereas the Drinking Water Protection Act of two thousand and one ensures the protection of potable water further to the interests of public health, and whereas Section thirty-one-one of the Act states, "The minister may by order made on the recommendations of the provincial health officer designate an area for the purpose of developing a drinking water protection plan for the area." And whereas the provincial health officer must consider whether to make a recommendation under this section if requested by a drinking water officer, therefore be resolved that council directs staff to correspond with the Fraser Health Local Drinking Water Officer with respect to concerns regarding the negative impact on, potential negative impact on the potable water supply further to the location of the proposed EBCO and Weir development applications in South Langley, in and around the vulnerable unconfined Brookswood Aquifer."
Is that a notice of motion, or?
Yes. Sorry, yeah.
That was notice of motion?
N-O-M? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Did, I presume you'll send that to Ms. Bauer?
Yes, I'll press the button.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other new business?
Termination.
Second, and Counsel Sparrow made it in there tonight. Okay, thanks.